Good. 708 will call the March 1st meeting of Pembroke School Committee to order. Apologize for the little bit late start. We will, first of all, a couple things to folks here and folks at home. The meeting is recorded, posted to the website generally about 24 hours after completion, mainly for our minutes, but also for viewing at a later date for those interested. No visitors here tonight. Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely. If you want questions during the meeting, please email seinfo@pembrokek12.org. And seinfo@pembrokek12.org will try and monitor that during the meeting. If something comes up, we'll obviously bring it up in real time. If not, we miss it, we'll try to come back to it or we'll make sure you get an answer relatively quickly after the meeting. With that, no adjustments to the agenda. There are no communications. Bill's schedules were sent out today. And why don't we just do real quick, we'll do the, is a motion to approve the minutes of Tuesday, February 1st?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Susie, second by Lance. Any discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
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 It is unanimous. Okay. We have Brian Phillips here to talk about athletic budget first.
Alrighty, we'll get right into this. Do I need this mic right here?
You do.
Yeah.
Alright, so to get started, we're obviously going to cover the 2020, 2021, some of the accolades that our student athletes received. You know, it was a tremendous season. This entails our winter, our spring and our fall season. And you can see the numbers right here, they don't lie. We have 98 Patriot League All-Stars, three Patriot League MVPs, a ton of all-school classics from three different papers, East MS All-Stars, Division II Coach of the Year, some state qualifiers, official division titles in the Patriot League and MIA Round of 16 finalists. So all in all, a tremendous season for all our student athletes, many teams. And it's a lot more than just the numbers that this slide shows. And our goal for athletics is obviously success in the field, but success off the field as well. So a lot of stuff that's done in the classroom that this slide won't show, but I do want to make sure that we mention that. There's a lot more success than just what that slide shows. Moving on to some of the goals for this upcoming fiscal year, '23, and we're fortunate to have a relationship with Brigham Women's in our, as our athletic training services at the high school. Josh Lucas is our primary trainer who does a ton for our student athletes, and he wears many hats for us. So an athletic trainer is kind of a niche role where they're not a sport coach, they don't determine playing time. So they're almost like the sounding board for a lot of our student athletes. And the relationships that they create with our student athletes, the feedback has been tremendous. So he does a lot of our care for our student athletes in terms of medical, but he's also a CSCS, which means a Certified Strength and Intuition Coach. So he runs all our strength and conditioning programs from the summertime during the school year. And there's been a tremendous influx of student athletes and teams using the weight room, which has been awesome. So it's not just football anymore, it's not just track, now there's girls across, girls hockey, our boys soccer program. So we're really starting to optimize and maximize that weight room that I think has been kind of minimized before. So it's been really good to have Josh. And Brigham Women's also, from the COVID perspective, they've been a tremendous resource. So if we need any kind of physician clearance and things that way, they've really helped. Moving forward to student athlete diversity, the MIA is rolling out a new, in partnership with the NFHS and Project Implicit, the Implicit Bias course, which is a free roughly 20-minute online course. The MIA is asking all of our student athletes, coaches, administrators to take and to get that certificate of completion. In addition, there's a DEI pledge, Diversity Equity Inclusion pledge. There's eight different, if you haven't seen, there's eight different statements on there. They're asking all our student athletes, all our coaches and admin, to sign that off every school year. So if that is approved, the plan is to kind of roll that out with our school and athletic registration. So every sports season, we have a registration process and try to get that integrated right into that process. So we can streamline it, we can track it and not have 400 pieces of paper with each individual and try to organize it that way. Moving forward, our youth programs increasing involvement. So I truly believe that every high school that has athletic success and sustained success, the youth is a vital factor in that. You have to be streamlined from the youth level to the high school level and make sure that both of those parties have relationships. So with some of the new coaching hires this year, boys soccer for exam, excuse me, girls soccer for example, the youth program director was involved in that hiring process. That way they can help vet that candidate, make sure that our high school coaches are in alignment with our youth process, and our youth process is in alignment with our high school process. We did the same thing for our boys basketball hire, having our youth director involved with that as part of the committee for the hiring process. So ways to really get them involved from day one with that hiring, get them to know the candidate and to increase that involvement. Next here is probably something more selfishly I would like to do, but it improved some of the athletic lobby at the high school. I think facilities, athletic facilities in general, our student athletes care a ton about that. Any school you go to, if they see something that has that wow factor, they talk about it, they mention it, it goes on social media. It just has a good positive experience that I think it leads to. So just some flooring things in kind of that lobby area. And then down the road, digital record boards. We have a bunch of banners around the gym that really have the history of a lot of sports. That stuff is great, but a way to kind of digitize that, music cloud, and that way you can easily promote different awards, records, MVPs, things that way. And then lastly, goal five on here, hopefully get back to some more community service, community involvement. With a lot of the restrictions lifted, a lot of this stuff has really been minimized the past two years, obviously due to the pandemic and things that way. So I think that's really important for our student athletes to get back and to utilize community service. Alright, some budget overview, and this is the overview page from stipends, salaries, our athletic maintenance custodian, our officials and supplies. So to kind of dig down onto here is more in detail of what it looks like. Not a ton of changes, but obviously, I don't think, whatever sector we're talking about, we know there's price increases going on with inflation and what's happening in the world. So we are going to see cost increases. One specifically on here is in the rentals. And our Hobart Arena is under new ownership. So the previous owners of, since that facility was built, has changed. That person was a Pembroke resident, really, kind of, we had some good agreements and deals in place with him. But now Edge Sports Group is taking that ownership over. We'll see what that's going to look like and roll out in the next, you know, in the future. But there's certainly going to be changes. Rental costs have already gone up for practice sheets of ice, for game sheets of ice, and things that way. But we are trying to move our girls hockey program to that rink to get both our boys and girls in Pembroke in our backyard rather than our girls traveling to Bridgewater Arena. But that is one change. Specifically, I know will happen is that rental price increase. League dues and fees always haven't changed. Our field maintenance, I mean, just a simple example, our field paint is going from $36 to almost $70, just a can of paint. So these things are going to change and is part of what we live in. But the rest of this stuff is pretty consistent, uniforms, transportation, game officials and athletic supplies. So the participation numbers, we've talked about the youth involvement being a driver of this and being important. So this slide is our fall season for the past five years, starting from 2017 to this year, 2021. You can see those trends, you can see the numbers in that far right category, is that five-year rolling average of what those numbers look like. So obviously some sports on here are trending in the right direction. Football, for example, is at its highest number since before 2017. That's fantastic. But conversely, we see some sports on here like boys soccer, field hockey, really being two that have been trending down a little bit. So hopefully we can get rebound on those. But all in all, I think a pretty good rebound from that COVID year, numbers are back. I think coming hopefully in the right direction as we trend. And this, the winter sports is really where we see the positive increase. So, you know, last year, obviously being a COVID year of 248, which had an impact on that number, we're back up to 285, which is highest since 2017, 2018. So there are some positives that we're seeing in terms of increases across the board from our winter sports. And then finally is our spring sports. The 2019, 2020 numbers were omitted because there was no sports season due to COVID. So that's kind of an outlier in terms of numbers, but that number did not go into the rolling average. So that data is essentially a four-year rolling average from our tennis, lacrosse, baseball, softball and track. So obviously this will be an interesting number to see if it rebounds like the winter did and to see how those numbers continue to evolve over the spring 2022 season. Community service, obviously as being a goal, but I wanted to highlight some of the community service that did happen over the last couple of sports seasons. I think it's critical that our student athletes do it. So our volleyball team is, and our boosters do a tremendous job on our volleyball side to really organize and make sure this stuff comes to fruition of this happening. So they do a great breast cancer awareness night at a home game. They visited some homeless shelters and provided a lot of time, which I think is probably the most critical thing out of all this. Rather than any kind of donations, I think time is the most valuable thing that they can give, which I think did a tremendous job on. Our girls and boys soccer team worked together to go to the food pantry, golf team, Coach Brandon Hall does a great job with organizing that every year. And then our boys hockey with the Plymouth County Coalition for Homeless. So all in all, really good from those sports teams. Some capital items, and fortunately, the first item here, ice machine, I think has already been solved. Our boosters did a nice fundraiser over the winter time, and they're going to provide the funds to get an ice machine for us. So that is an all-encompassing sports tool that is definitely utilized by almost everyone. So it's nice when you can cross something off and it's not out of our direct budget. That's good.
Doesn't happen often.
Nope. The links timing system is a significant cost, but it's a one-time cost. And it really can cater to our cross-country, our indoor track and outdoor track, which is like over 250 athletes when you look at the numbers. So really what it provides is what's called FAT timing, which is fully automated timing. If, for instance, our winter track goes to Reggie Lewis Center, it's like the Olympic timing systems. It's the most accurate up to date. The old hand watches are thrown away and you get a real time and take out the human element out of it. So that's a pretty cool system. It allows us to host a lot of state relay type things and individual type meets, which is something I would like to move forward to at some point. Myself, it's digital record boards on here. You can see that. And then finally, the scoreboard for the softball field, which hopefully can happen here in the near future. So some of the things, these updates are things that already occurred. I wanted to get caught up on our uniforms, which I think we've, there's about 12 teams here, I think. But we've made a good jump over the past 12 months to hit this. Football, it's just got the home side. Those jerseys are a big cost compared to speaking to every other team based off the team size and just that uniform. So we still need to get the away. But our boys soccer, cross-country track, girls hockey, gymnastics, tennis, lacrosse and wrestling program have all got new uniforms. So I think we're getting caught up there. And then finally, which is an exciting piece to kind of end the- caught up there. And then finally, which is an exciting piece to kind of end the, the athletic side on is, is moving baseball back on campus. I know it's been a drive and initiative for, for some time. And, you know, we're getting the approval on, on funding and starting those phases. I think there'll be a, a cool process to, to return them from Mataquisha Street back to Pembroke High School and get them to play on campus. So all in all, I think there's a, a really good amount of positive momentum in our athletic program from our team's success. I know this week in general, just speaking, we have, we have some tournament games. You know, our, our boys hoops will host a, a game on Friday. Patriot League champions, our girls' hockey program, for the first time ever, host a home hockey game at Hobart Arena here in Pembroke, which I think anytime we can, we can offer that is, is really exciting. So positive momentum, I think we have, you know, in our community, in the hallways, in the schools. So keep that, keep that moving forward.
Questions for Brian?
Yes. So regarding the MIAA bias training. So is that like requi, do you have a choice in the matter?
So you, you do have a choice. And I know that it's included here as a goal for his department, but that, we, we vet that through policy sub because it would be a handbook change, the athletic handbook, similar to the anti-hazing program that's in there. So it's not something that's happening right now. It's only going to be with, with policy sub, input into the full committee as a recommendation or lack of a recommendation. You all have the ability to set policy, not MIA.
Well, the MIA, the pledge is a criteria. You can't compete without the pledge. What about the, the education piece?
The Implicit Bias Course. That's, so I think that's one part. They rolled that out real quickly. They're trying to roll it out real quickly without getting much feedback from the league.
So here, here's the thing. So I was on the, it's called the discriminatory, discriminatory reporting, discriminatory incident reporting committee. The number of incidents is skyrocketing with regard to these instances. If you just Google, you will find seven made the news this school year already. One within the last month has a school that went fanless at two games, and the school that they played chose to not play them for the rest of the school year in the sport because it got that bad. Amazing part about that is they stopped the match. They brought the administrator, they brought the officials, and they brought both coaches, and they didn't do anything in the beginning. They took an event after. And the AD had to. It's gotten bad. I was at, I only went to two sporting events this fall. One of them stopped because of the fan behavior towards the opposing team. The official came over, stopped. They had to page the administrator on and stop it. So this is what happened. In 2020, the athletic director of Cambridge Rins and Latin brought it, he wanted a form because he wanted the MIA to track it. Because if there's, and we've had our own incidents where we've been on both sides of it, where we've been accused and where we have had to accuse because of the behavior. He wanted just to track it because the way the rule currently still is, tell me if I'm wrong, Brian, is it's up to the school who is being accused to investigate and they determine the punishment. So if you notice what happened in Duxbury, the punishment did not come from the MIA. The punishment came from the Duxbury Public Schools. So if something, God forbid, happened at one of our events, one of the playoff games, it would be up to Pembroke High School to determine if we were accused. That said, if there's a continued pattern of behavior by a school, there's no accountability for them. No accountability for the coach for these types of incidents. Coach gets thrown out, he gets two, he's ejected twice and he's banned for a year.
He has to go to a coach's education class.
Coach after the first one, right? Second one, I think he's gone for a period of time or she's gone. So if this happens and a coach does this, and we've seen coaches do this, there's nothing in the, there's nothing in the MIA handbook to dictate what, what occurs. So anyway, Tom Aria, who's the AD at Cambridge Rins and Latin, was frankly, as he said, he was sick of his kids getting abused at certain matches. Nothing ever happened or nothing ever being reported back. So he brought this in, it started with a form. And the form turned into what ended up as two subcommittees. I was on the discipline subcommittee that set the discipline. I thought it would be a couple of meetings, you'll set the policy, you'll frame it after chemical, health, and we'll be done. It ended up being about a half dozen meetings of one to two hours in length because we, once you start peeling back the onion, it got pretty complex. One is chemical health, which is vaping, tobacco, alcohol is an automatic. This, if there's a violation by a student, it's not automatic. A student, they could choose just to bring the student in because there was talk about potential, the student acting out. That was one of the things. The second was what do you do for fan sections? What do you do if it's a game official? What do you do if it's a coach? So it got very complicated. The, there was a second group that talked about education because there was a, a big concern by the group, the overall group. How can you punish if you don't set the expectation? So the first expectation was the pledge, which the pledge looks a lot like the hazing pledge or the bullying pledge. But they wanted to segregate it or separate it because of the specificness of this. Even though this would fall under hazing and bullying, it didn't, it, they wanted to deal with it separately because except for a hazing, two hazing incidents this year that got a lot of press, there's been more instances where we're talking, we're not just talking about, just so people, because people automatically immediately go to race. This isn't just race. The Duxbury was religion. There's also been issues around disability and there's been issues around sexual orientation. And they, they also had to put safeguards in for a student, if it was sexual orientation, to be able to anonymously report and then have somebody, you know, investigate. The MIA would then take the lead in the investigation with the schools. Anyway, I know it's a long way to go around on this thing, but they had the, the same concern around sexual orientation is the same that the students brought to us when they talked about the fees. So anyway, that's kind of where it is. Two other things I'll point out. This is covered under Title IX. And if you look under Title IX, the number of incidents in Title IX is pretty high of reported. Doesn't mean that that's all that happens. There's about 100 issues a year that are reported. There was a spike about 10 years ago where there was over 500 reported. That's just the reported, not the unreported. Anyway, the whole point of the, of the pledge was to start to put structure around tracking these incidents because they're clearly not going down. They're going, they're going up. And ironically, two hours ago, I got a, in my inbox, a survey about parental behavior for clubs, club soccer events because it's driving officials out. It's just becoming difficult. I'm not just trying to say every match is like this, right, Brian? I mean, we know 90%, 95% of the matches are clean and fun, kids have a good time, we have a great fan section. It's that 1 to 5% that is really causing a problem for the kids, for the parents, and just the overall expectation. Did I miss anything? Did you disagree with anything I said?
No, I disagree.
And you know what? All of that makes perfect sense that we would need something in place. There's no question that we need something in place. My issue is really like, I, I did the training over the weekend and-
Right. And it's, it's not geared for kids.
Not only is it not geared for kids, it's like, it's, it doesn't address most of what you just said. It only addresses the black and white issue and gender. And it makes it look, and the examples given are very, I mean, it's, it's geared towards black, black as matter, which I get.
Right. So it's implicit bias training as opposed to a training of diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging.
Right.
So anytime we're going to educate our students about something, we always err on the side of not doing a one and done. Putting a kid in front of a computer to take the 20-minute module in Implicit Bias, Implicit Bias Training doesn't do anything for our kids. If they sat there and went through the training, that's going to go over the head of 85% of our student athletes. It's just not geared for students. And for the 15% of our kids that it actually resonates with, we're doing nothing to support them if we're just putting them in front of a computer to take the module. So, you know, I think Brian and I kind of talked a little bit about, you know, brainstorming, how do we make this something that works in Pembroke? Should we bring together a group of student athletes and talk about what are some of the issues that you see and have it be more of an organic process here in Pembroke? But at the same time, if it's something that we're asking athletes to do, it's something we should be asking all students to do, right? That's kind of where we're at with the chemical health violation a few years ago. It was only imposed on athletes, and then we broadened it to be all extracurricular. So-
Right. That makes sense.
I mean, for me, I, they were, I wasn't on that education group that looked at it. I mean, I saw a syllabus, not syllabus, I saw an abstract of it before the course was released. I sent it over to Brian a year ago now. Because that part was going on for a year. But I wasn't, personally, I wasn't that close. I've never seen the class.
I took it as an admin and then I took it as a student to see if it was any different. It's the exact same course.
Yeah. I will say that one thing when they were looking at this, because I do remember this part, again, our part on discipline was finished somewhere around June, and then I had some stuff going on. So I missed the last couple of meetings before they, what they sent to the board. So I'm not even positive what they sent to the board. I had to even go back to check emails to see what happened when, because it was so long ago and COVID changed everything. They wanted, and this was the, all the educators on the committee, and I probably, I was the only non-educator. They were adamant that there'd be some type of education because there was a concern for many reasons, including legal reasons. If they punish, they're going to get called on, how did the student know? And they did not want it to fall on, well, they should know. Because that was the, that was the concern. They were preparing for the worst case of all. Because there are, what we did is we put specific guidelines around, within seven days of an incident, there's a hearing. Because you can't let these things linger for, for a number of different reasons. Not only for the accuser, but for the accused. Right? Somebody's accused, they, they have a right to, you know, due process because it could be cases where it's not true. But so there was, there was a lot of talk around that. That's how I know the education piece got kicked off. I wasn't part of it, so I just, I didn't, I didn't even-
With such a, a subpar, I don't know how the word, there's training-
I will say with that video as a district now, so it's the Patriot League, Social League, Cape'n the Islands, in our last meeting, it was almost unanimous that we were going back to the MIA and saying this needs to be better. We, we did not feel comfortable putting this in front of our student athletes, and we don't feel like it hits a target of what we're trying to attack. So that was unanimous with over 30 schools.
Okay. Yeah. So that's how I feel. Like I don't, I feel like our students shouldn't be forced to watch this training and that we, if we're going to do something, it should be something that's inclusive of every issue, you know, all issues. Like, you know, similar to like, you know, a bullying kind of thing. Like, nobody should be bullied. And we need to, it, it shouldn't be just about one subgroup of people. Do you know what I mean?
I'd be surprised if they, yeah, if they changed the discourse, wouldn't be surprised. I'd be surprised if there wasn't an educational component at some point. Whether it's this new, the hazing, because even the hazing, which you thought would have been gone, they had two hazing incidents this year. They were both hockey related, if I recall correctly.
Just to clarify, when you're saying they are the athletic events that you've benched, they're not Pembroke events?
No. No, 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 no. Sorry. Sorry, yeah. No, no, no.
You said you were at two sporting events.
I was at two sporting events. Ironically, neither one of them was Pembroke.
You'd come to Pembroke and see one that's-
I guess so. No, no, no. I've been, I've been for enough of those.
Everybody that's watching at home to understand.
Yeah, no, I, yeah.
You go to events outside of Pembroke.
I do, I do. I, you know, for, I coach, I coach high school age athletes, right? I coach, I coach girls in soccer and boys in baseball. And ironically, I asked my boys last night this question. I had eight of them there. None of them were Pembroke boys that were there. And I said, I go, I asked them, I said, does this stuff happen? And I said, it's just between us. I'm not going to, you know, name names or anything. And it was interesting because only one of the boys said it does happen. He says it happens in hockey. His exact words were, you wouldn't believe what people say. The other kid said, no, they've never heard it from an opponent. He goes, but what you hear in the locker room from teammates is exactly what this is, which goes to the hazing. So maybe it's, the world's changing. We have to look at it on both sides. But clearly, something has to be done. It's impacting the quality of the experience for the students, right? When you talk, and this was at, this was not Pembroke, it was a neighboring town. They're stopping the match and they're calling the administrator who is now standing in the middle of the student section, right? And this was an important game. This was, this actually had impact on the league title because some kids just got into it with a kid on the field. He went back at them, which was mistake number one. But then mistake number two is they just kept piling on. And this stuff, and it's not abnormal.
Yeah. I mean, unfortunately, it kind of mirrors society, right? Because that's how everyone seems to be, is always an argument, but.
No, and I agree. I watched it as well. Didn't think it would work for us. I understand it's probably MIA's Band-Aid to cover themselves if something happens. Well, we've told you. But that doesn't work for our district. And I think, I like the angles and the avenues of forums and getting kids together. In my experiences, through work and through our groups at the Y, it's, it's been very effective for others to understand what each other's going through. So a better format to approach that, because I think will be more effective to get the kids to understand what others are going through versus watching a video and really not being able to translate that into a sporting event. So, and like you said, it's not something I think we want to just keep to the sporting teams. We want to make sure it's, it's a community thing.
Interesting thing in this part, I do remember vividly, is, and not that it's easy for that being the only thing what they bring forward, it was the only thing they could find that they could, that was an online resource. It was the only one. It was just, which I thought was interesting. And it was something that had just been released 11 months ago. So.
I think part of the problem too is that they didn't reach out to, I think, any, many of the neighboring schools and schools that would, would be willing to be involved in this. And they just took a, NFHS learned, there's a million courses that are very generalized, not to a certain state or a certain school or sport, but it's a very general video. There's new, the new executive director of the MIA. So I think a lot of things got rolled out quickly without being truly vetted by a lot of the, the member schools.
Normally, when an MIA rule change happens, a change to the bylaws or a, or a rule change, it has to go in front of every subcommittee. So even if it has nothing to do with your, again, I'm on game officials. And we, there was a, a rule about postponing tennis matches if the wind was above a certain miles an hour, whatever it was. It had to come to us because every committee or subcommittee has to vote on every rule change. And it didn't go. It only went in front of like four committees at the most. I think it was, and sportsmanship saw it. In fact, I know it never went back to game officials because, no, because I, because we meet September, December, and March. And I know it wasn't at either one of those meetings. So it's just, they were trying to get it done quickly because they had had, in the middle of this was when the Duxbury incident happened. And I think it, it changed, I, that's just, this is my opinion. It changed, it changed the landscape of how people look at these things.
So to get clarity on SUSE, the pledge is currently required to participate.
It'll be required next year. It's not required this year.
Not required this year.
They were hoping that folks would do it this year. We'll like just push it in. That's not how we function. So.
Yeah. Okay.
Fort Worth, one of the schools that, is one of those seven has rolled it out already? Just because I think it's-
Some schools have, some schools have, but they're definitely reactive.
I think they rolled it out before and it didn't work. But Ian, if you just, if you get to Google this stuff and you read some of the stories, it's pretty crazy.
Yeah. Hopefully they come up with a different solution for our training.
Right. And I think, I mean, there's value in the pledge. I think setting expectations, if you're going to have a disciplinary process for it is important. The training piece, whether or not we find an answer-
The pledge was a little more neutral in it.
And we cover a lot of stuff in pledges in our athletic registration. Like you have to follow the MIA sportsmanship rule 58. Like that's part of the pledge. We already agreed to do that.
Yeah. I didn't have a problem with the pledge at all. Right. It's, it's-
It's been a good year being, right?
Yeah.
Other question?
Not mine.
Oh, Anna in general? One I, I just want to commend. I know, finally getting settled in during the fun COVID time. So welcome to-
Have you guys ever seen Brian's face?
No, it's probably the first time.
You've seen the beard coming out.
Exactly.
On a screen or with a mask.
Exactly. Well, I just want to commend, I've been a part of the youth sports programs in, in various different ways. And I got to see, I think, the wrestling night, senior night, when the youths were there, and then basketball as well. So just how you've been intentional with that. And I think it's great and the encouragement, because we know, hopefully that's our future athletes that will be at the high school level and the importance of that. My son took the summer camp and he went and watched the, the seniors and juniors now playing on the court and he can relate to them now, right? So I think that connection is vital. And then continuing the, the culture. When you talk about the community involvement and, and the positives that they can have in the community, it's great. And so I'd love to see all the teams involved in what you shared today. So that's, that's great stuff.
Yeah. I've got a couple of quick questions, Brian. Do we have a, I've determined it's administrative monitor, chaperone at every sporting event we do?
Every home, every home event, I'll be there. If I'm out there, Eazy Katie's there for every home event. Then away events-
Then we clone them and we send them to other places.
For away contests, we're not required to have that. Obviously, usually the home and aways are the same days. But every home event, we have an admin there.
Okay. But I, I was pretty sure we didn't. I said that kind of makes-
And you'd be surprised. It's not, the MIA does not require an admin at every, at every, at every sport event. So there's only select ones.
Well, again, I just, again, having grown up with my father being a school principal, we'd be at a game and not, you were acting up. You would really point across and yell across the room, you know, Phillip, sit down. And people would be like, my dad was there. Spent more games in my life. I also want to give you, you know, kudos for a great job. You came into a real difficult situation and turned it around and you've done an amazing job. And I, I can't thank you enough. Just a program you- Just the program, you talked about some stuff, and I don't know if they actually do it on the high school level, but again, you know, I have the Springfield background, I've seen some schools, they do that like adopt a kid program, that might be a special needs child or someone with disabilities, and they bring them in and let them be kind of part of the football team.
Kind of like Team Impact.
Yeah, Team Impact, that's exactly what I was thinking of, thank you. Do we have something like that at the high school level in Massachusetts? Is it something we could look at? I mean, we were talking about inclusion and all this type of stuff, and I've just seen some of those kids, as you see them on the bench wearing the sweatshirt or, you know, whatever it is, and I, I just think it's like they light up the room, and I, I think it, again, to me, it sets the tone for the place, like, people saying, hey, look at the other kid with the towel, or the kid with the, the water bottle, so I just.
I can't say what it is in experience Unified Basketball was for us at the high school to the point where it now, because it's at the middle school, I can talk a little bit more about what that kind of looks like for, for our kids, but that in itself is such an electric experience.
Yeah.
Like, I think we, the, Mary Beth and Jess and I, which were at HFO Games and Fed, I would like to go to one of these games every day. Right, like, that is just that, that moment, and, you know, with the peers and the, the students that are in our programs, it was just an amazing experience, like, what you're referencing sounds like building on that.
Yeah, and I mean, again, actually with cheerleading and things of that nature, and I just think it's a feel-good story, it's a heartwarming story, it, it's. It's hard to really say, you wish it would happen every day, every game, or whatever, it's just, you, you feel good about it, so yeah, I'm just throwing the idea out there.
Yep.
Again, I think there's some great goals and some great stuff, and can't thank you enough, so.
One of the, one of the students on the Unified High School basketball team ended up coaching the Unified Middle School team.
That's awesome.
Wow.
We have Unified strengthening the chain now as well, so that was another.
That's cool.
It's been awesome.
Is Team Impact just college or is it high school?
I would have to look into that, I don't know the details on Team Impact.
Yeah.
Team, well, Team Impact at all college, because my sense college team did it?
Yeah.
And they had it, this kid was, this kid was great, totally got in trouble with the athletic director for a tweet, but that's another story, it's a true story, but he came to all the games, it was, it was an awesome, awesome experience for everybody. Three quick questions. Well, one comment, can you just put the, on the numbers, keep the percentage of population too, just when you look at the total numbers?
Yep.
Just, it'll just give us an idea, because I know enrollment went down with some of those numbers, but it would help, it would just help to know that the percentage of students participating went down.
Right, our student athletes in the fall in particular tend around forty-two percent, it hasn't, that hasn't changed over the past year.
Yeah, that's because.
Even though there's a down with number, the percentage has been.
That's why I thought, I wasn't sure if the percentage was, were down by the percentage of students. How close are we to potentially losing a freshman team for a couple of the sports you mentioned, around soccer, or, and I think, what should they say, soccer, field hockey?
So, yep, so we did not have a field hockey freshman team, we don't have a girls' basketball freshman hoops team, softball, which we'll, we'll get to later, we don't have a freshman softball team, girls' lacrosse, we certainly want a freshman, we'd be close to having a, we don't know if we have a JV, like, girls' lacrosse team, obviously, girls' hockey were varsity only, where boys would have JV for hockey.
It's, it's just because, you know, at least in some of the sports, we've traditionally run three levels of soccer, right? Field hockey's come up and down, other sports have come up and down, volleyball, same thing with softball, it just would, would help the ones that have been traditionally three, three levels? How close are we, or what do we need? Because it leads to my second question, you talked about the connection with the youth programs, this isn't just a Pembroke issue, this is across the board, how do you do the connection with the coach to the youth program? This is probably, in some cases rhetorical, because maybe they're coaching in season, or you're asking them to do things out of season?
Yeah, well, number one, I think that interview process is a great way, because they have to want to, because there's some co, high school coaches who just want to focus on high school athletics, and they, their youth piece is a separate entity, so they have to want to first off, but I think secondly, there has to be, so like our, our basketball program did a tremendous job, like, at halftime of our girls' basketball game, there might be more youth volunteer than, than anyone else, so invite them to, to the games, get them a part of the, the high school practices, get our high school student athletes around our youth populations, and that way our high school coaches, they can be there, but their presence is felt with the student athletes at the high school level, and I think that's, I think our youth kids want to see our high school athletes more than the coaches, to be honest with you, you know what I mean? So I think that's a driving factor to really help that, that relationship.
Because I think it keeps the numbers up, right? It also, you know, lots of other, other things too, it just would help, and it's not just a Pembroke issue, it's across the board.
Yeah.
Actually, so, actually, sorry, two other quick ones, the game ice, usually, years ago, the deal was, we pay for practice, game ice was free, but they kept the gate, and we now paying for game ice and then keeping the gate.
Game ice, practice ice, anytime we're on that ice, we're, we're paying.
And they're keeping the gate.
So, this, this new group right now is letting us, Edge Sports Group, they're letting us keep the gate that was starting on January one, so they took over right at the end of December, so right in the middle of fiscal year, which wasn't ideal for anyone, so we had about a week heads up to adapt and adjust, so they're letting us keep the gate for this year, and the next year is going to be all TBD, all to, to be determined after, after this hockey season finalizes, but there has to be some compromise, I think, with that.
Because on a JV game, I get it, because not a lot of people, but if you're talking a varsity game, a rivalry game, the ice and the gate, it's pretty big, it's pretty big money.
And I will say, even the previous ownership was Ron, he kept the gate and we paid for game ice, so we have not, that's been the same for a while.
Yeah, I.
Yeah, and.
Well.
He wasn't cutting us any deals, that, you know, it was pretty firm.
Yeah, I just, it just isn't.
Yeah.
You can't build a rink, so.
No.
I mean, you can.
We can, but yeah.
Except on a capital project.
Yeah, no, please don't put that on there.
With the rooftop pool.
Yeah. So, last question, this, the scoreboard for the softball field, is, can that be covered by the CPC funding we have? And if not, is the six to eight thousand dollars include the wiring out, I'm assuming you try and come out of the track, is it, that could cost more than this?
Didn't we?
So, two things, first, with the CPC, if there's money left in that, it says field improvement, so I did go back and ask, and this would be covered under that amount.
Because it's a permanent fixture, right?
Right, when we wired for the irrigation, Chuck Leach from Y E S Electric wired out, so there is electricity out there.
Okay.
Right in that little shed there, if you can see it all around.
Okay, because we're going to want to do, if we're going to do this here, you'd want to do it for the baseball field, right? So you'd want to make them wire up each other.
Yep.
Okay.
Do you want to do the softball waiver now? It seems connected to this, on this topic. You have, under my report, consideration of approval for an eighth grade softball waiver, I'll let Brian talk to it, it's, we've, we've done it for the past couple of years to keep the numbers up.
Yep, so the main driver is to keep our, our varsity and JV programs alive, right now, we had a softball meeting last week, twenty-five student athletes showed up to that, so we're expecting to be in the same range we were last year, when we got approval on it, and obviously, anytime we have a middle level waiver, they will always play at the lowest level, so these eighth graders will play at the JV level, not the varsity level.
Motion to approve the request to request a waiver for eighth grade girls to play softball.
Seconded.
Motion by David, seconded by Susan. All those, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that is unanimous. Facilities.
So this, there's a little bit more detail in this presentation than the draft that I had sent you, and we can, this actually has a budget number.
You had some numbers, yeah.
That's what I said.
Facilities are free this year.
Everything's free, so.
Alrighty, so we'll get started on some of the goals for, for maintenance slash facilities here for the, for the upcoming year, and some of these things will, I'll talk about briefly now, and then as we get into this presentation, there's a little bit more depth and detail to it, so. Obviously, with, with the pandemic, our air, our air, our air quality system, our air quality, how important that's become, in terms of changing out simple things like the air filters and making sure the buildings are, are getting outside air, that's obviously going to remain a, a major priority for all our, our buildings. And really, when I talk about buildings, this is all the five schools, so the high school, middle school, and three elementary schools, that's what we're referring to here. The high school rooftop unit upgrades, we have twenty-one rooftop units at the high school, many of these are, they're tired, so they need some, some removal and replacing, so.
You're so kind, Brian.
Yeah, we're looking forward to, to getting some youth up there on the roof, the doors.
Younger machines, we're not putting kids up on the roof.
Yeah. The exterior doors in our district, obviously, there's a ton of doors, a ton of usage to evaluate and improve, and we have some of this already in the works. Our phone systems here at North Pembroke, this is, this is going to happen before twenty-three, so this will happen pretty, pretty, pretty close to our date now, but there's seventy-seven classroom phones, analog classroom phones, and like twenty digital admin phones that will get replaced, there's some new technology, obviously, that, that changes, so we're going to adopt that new technology to get us compliant with some new laws, so we can pass that, and then in the future, Hobmack Elementary will be the last school to get this upgraded, and all five in the district will be compliant with each other. Interior surveillance cameras at all elementary schools, our fire alarm, this is, this is more of a panel, it's a fire alarm panel at our Hobmack Elementary School, which is peripheral and interior, so an update to that, and then finally, district-wide maintenance from tractor snow blowers, lawn mowers, and things that way, so. To get into a little bit more detail, and to start with a budget overview, obviously, you can see here from, from salaries, eighteen custodians divided by our five schools, some of our contracted services, which we can go over here, obviously, the repairs are, are pretty much the most significant cost out of all this, with like, with some tired equipment and things that way, we've, we've had to constantly take a look at it, and really, the HVAC has been a, a big cost of this at the high school, to make sure those units are running properly, the size of that school, and those, those units being old tend to have quite a few issues, some electrical things as well tie into this and plumbing, so. The last big one here, wastewater supplies, has been an increase on that, we had to get a project done in our wastewater treatment at our high school, a bearing that we had to replace, and, and anyone who knows anything about wastewater, everything costs a lot of money, it's a very niche sector, and, and it's expensive, and, but you have to get it done.
Right, and some of the, so custodial supplies, that amount is a little bit lower than we've been in years past, we've been able to capitalize on some of the remaining CARES funding that was available through twelve thirty-one for some maintenance supplies, then the unencumbered amount, obviously, that's the amount that's still available in the contracted services budget, that's about eighteen and a half percent of the budget, which is pretty much normally where we are in March at this time, it will still allow us to continue with the services that, that have been going on so, so far through the year, I think the one thing that's kind of a wild card, it's not included here, it doesn't fall under maintenance as part of the budget, but our utility costs in the month of January were twenty-two thousand dollars more than they were last January, so we do need to keep a close eye on that. When I gave you our maintenance of effort budget back in early January, obviously, there was an increase in there for utilities, but it wasn't anywhere near what we're seeing, so we're working with the town to talk a little bit about the solar credits and kind of shifting some of that, because, you know.
Are you talking electric, or are you talking?
Electric.
What about gas?
So our, the gas bill cycle is a little bit off, so I can't, it's a mid-month cycle, so I have to go back and, and look at comparing it to last year, does the, the cycle's a little bit different than our electrical cycle, our gas bills are higher, but we haven't done the analysis on that.
Okay, because now, thinking of our budget timeline, and this is one of those things that could throw the budget into a little bit of sideways.
Right, so our, our electricity increased last year because we ran everything all the time.
Correct.
Our, our energy increased last year because we had windows open and we're pumping the heat, so, so some of, some of that will level off with the cost increase for those two utilities, but I still think it's going to be higher than we had anticipated.
Okay, so obviously, you know what's happened, oil, oil, it's, I think a seven-year high today, the natural gas is also, pardon me, so can we just, I'm trying to think, when will we hear back, or will we have enough time between now and when we're supposed to get the admin recommended budget?
So I was hoping when, at one of the times, either on the fifteenth or the twenty-second, when we're doing Jess or Mary Beth's budget, that I can give you an update on utilities and transportation, because you had asked for, and, yeah, kind of feed that in there, so over the next two weeks.
Okay.
Right, move forward. Some of the, the goals here broken up by school and interior and exterior to start outside, exterior doors to the high school, and, and we're, after we got these evaluated, we're finding it's a lot with the mullions and the door closures, so we're going to get those repaired rather than a lot of the doors, so that just makes sure the, the doors close tightly, that our alarm systems can be activated, not getting triggered by any kind of wind or storms, so this, this is actually going to happen probably here towards the later time of the summer, but a lot of those mullions will be fixed at the high school. Practice fields, obviously, this is something, as we go through the baseball field phases, to, to find out how we want to best attack this, so this is just on here, but the plan of attack is, is kind of to be determined of how that baseball project works out. Talked about the replacement, and that's seven HVAC units, we're going to start that, process of getting quotes this Friday, we'll get our first quote to get an idea of where we're going to be at, but seven would be about a third of what's on there right now, and some of those are, do not need repair, so that would really put us in a good position to, to get our school back in line of, of where it needs to be at the high school. Bryantville, the gym roof, I know this is, is going to happen soon, so that's a repair that's, that's kind of been on the list, and, and will get done. Moving here towards North Pembroke, the drainage back here at the playground, that's going to get addressed and, and, and fixed to help with any kind of water retention and things that way, and also the ramp and the stairs over the Carol Dodge Field, hopefully mitigate that, that risk, risky entrance. And then lastly, over at Hobmack, that fire alarm panel, which is a, a bigger project than I think we'd, we'd like to attack over there, but it's something that, once again, it's technology-based, a fire alarm, so we use Flight right now for that, and there's just been so many changes of their technology and upgrades over time, that, that needs to get addressed, and it's not that it's not functioning, it's functioning, but.
Just to clarify, the fire alarm at Hobmack works.
Right, it's functioning, there's just some, we'll get no trouble calls, and it, it's just more of an update, more of an upgrade and update, like anything, you know, over time, that, that stuff just gets, has to be.
Brian, one second. Didn't we, how long?
Bryantville didn't get a roof?
Yeah.
Because when we did the MSBA accelerated repair project, the Bryantville roof was still under warranty, there was an installation problem with the rubber roof there.
Right.
The roof at Bryantville, on the building itself, is just as good as where we're at in the other four buildings, it's just the gym in particular, and so we had looked at whether we would be replacing it with a shingle roof or with a metal roof, there's a significant difference in price for those, those two, two types of replacements, obviously, a lot of what Brian's talking about is contingent upon capital items that were moving forward, but the, the roof itself at Bryantville was not replaced, when the other four buildings were replaced.
In the contractor, bankrupt, and, and that was putting us into, had to deal with the insurance company, but the town has to, so building projects are us.
Yeah.
Right, they're, they're actually under the, the select board, so they were the ones who had to go back to the, on our behalf for this one, go to the insurance company, the bonding agent, the bonding company, in order to try to get repaired and.
Right.
Brian, we stopped here, we, we stopped here, so I'll ask it now, rather than we do it back inside, you talked about a few of these things here, so you talked about some of them are actually going to happen. Of the things that aren't going to happen, are there any that could be covered by the seventy-four thousand that's unencumbered, or are you expecting to spend the seventy-four thousand? Could you explain kind of where that fits? Because I'm trying to get my hands around what actually of this list we need to try and figure out how to find, what prioritize.
Aaron helps me in these situations with the money.
Yep. So as we all know, pairing the athletics and the facilities position was a decision that we made several years back. But it's not a natural combination. So Brian and I still work very closely together on the facilities pieces. He's, you know, learning the joys of our buildings, our roofs, our HVAC units. So within that seventy-four thousand of unencumbered funds, there is some opportunity to to look at some of the loading dock pieces. Everything else on this exterior list that Brian gave you is inclusive of funding we already have. So exterior doors was is already encumbered there at the high school for within their contracted services. The practice fields is part of the CPC funding. For the HVAC units, we have both capital funding and well, some of that SR three money that we talked about.
That's fine.
Gym roof capital, the drainage capital, CPC for the Carol Dodge Field and the fire panel we have on there.
It's sort of like a lot of these things we discussed at our budget last year.
Right. Other than the things that we've talked about in the long-range planning subcommittee as we move forward towards next year.
Fire alarm panels is muted this year. We talked about that in long-range planning, and that went to town as a capital item. Yeah, Carol Lodge Field was part of the CPC. Yeah, so, yeah, I just, okay, because I got thrown by the title and everything and then I.
Yeah, so the thousand that's unencumbered would just be regular maintenance and supplies. At the end, there's maybe five to ten thousand dollars that we can look at, you know, if that ends up being two more door, whatever the word is for doors is. Because those are quite expensive. There's not a ton of flexibility in that line.
Inside the buildings, sorry about the font size on this, so read along with me. Obviously, the the flooring at any of the the high traffic areas and even before we get into these, the interior stuff is obviously harder for us to accomplish during the school year. This is mostly mostly things we can get down during the school vacations or in the summertime just because of obviously the school usage in the building. So as we get to those times, repairing a lot of flooring in the calf, and I don't know if this has to do with a lot of the additional chemicals and things that way that we've used over the past couple of years to sanitize and and try to keep these things clean. But those are coming up, so that'll be a replacement. A lot of paintings in the classroom halls, gyms. Replacing the gas and water lines is is something that we're going to look into getting done into our science labs, obviously the chemicals. And I'm not even going to try to know what those chemicals do, but obviously, we need to update those and make sure they're functioning the way they need to. And replacing the transfer switch for our generator to make sure that 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 power does not get delayed or or not turn on. Moving to Bryantville, we talked about the interior security cameras. One out of the three boilers is going to be repaired, so we have two functioning, which is good. Art room floor tile needs to be replaced. Moving to the middle school, two out of three just need to be repaired, not necessarily changing to be new, but just to make sure they're functioning the way they need to be. The hot water boiler is something that we're going to have to evaluate and 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 see how much life we have left into that. Hot water pumps and interior security cameras at the middle school. North Pembroke, once again, security cameras, checking out our boilers. Obviously, you can see a trend here that boilers, they get a lot of usage, and they need to make sure that we're passing inspection and things that way, which we are right now, which is good. And Hobymock, we talked about the panel, security cameras, and once again, the transfer switch over on Learning Lane at Hobymock.
I'm just going to pause here and talk a little bit about the funding. So when we're talking about replacing the flooring in the cafeteria, some of that can come out of our food service revolving account depending upon where the the tiling is happening. Painting in classrooms and halls and the gym are things that are part of our regular budget and that happened over the summer, as Brian said. The gas and water lines you'll see are part of the larger conversation for capital as well as some of the town ARPA funding that can cover some of the water line work. The transfer transfer switch is within our regular maintenance budget. It's built in for FY twenty-three. Security cameras, again, we've had some conversation around that as a district at all the four remaining buildings. The boiler pieces is maintenance that's built in. So there is a funding plan for for all of the items on here.
Darren, can I ask a couple of questions tied to that? Just because some of these are ringing bells of things that happen at work, but.
It's never a good time.
You know, we're dealing with some buildings that aren't necessarily young anymore, like me. But do we have contingency funds set aside as part of this budgeting only because like we're dealing with a floor issue where I work and the tiles are coming up, but there's asbestos under it, which is usually expensive to work with. Same with like your phone system. We got into upgrading our phone system only to find out that some of the panels that are from our provider needed to be upgraded. And in the meantime, all the phones were dead until that could happen, and that wasn't a cheap fix. So it just makes me think about, you know, I guess I'm an HGTV addict, you know. What's our contingency fund and, you know, can Hillary afford it when she tries to finish this remodel kind of a thing?
Right. So a lot of the projects that we look at doing within our buildings that aren't new, though there's public opinion otherwise, we really don't open up the can of worms. We don't look at building envelope, we're not looking at that type of stuff because wiring, all of those things, what we know what it's going to look like when we start to do that, and we're not in a place where our budget would support that. We obviously have the opportunity to go back to the town if there were an emergency to ask for funding. Within our budget, there isn't, you know, there's, we've we've gone through this before. I think there's about, you know, eight percent that's kind of discretionary that we could kind of scrape together if something were to come up that we needed to cover. We're fortunate that we don't have asbestos anywhere and that our phone projects that we've done in the past couple of years have been through town meeting funding and have come in under budget, so we do have a little bit of flux there. But we are very cautious when we look at projects. Even when Brian started talking about the doors, I got really nervous. You'll remember when we did the ESCO project, we did some weather stripping on the doors, and that ended up being a quite larger scale endeavor than we had hoped for. Because once you start to touch things, you know, we had to do some masonry work to to complement some of that. So we don't necessarily have a contingency. We have a couple of avenues if we were to be in an emergency where we could go back to the town or or I could come to you all and ask for a transfer of funds from, you know, a different place and put off some some preventative maintenance. And again, you know, that's never a good good place to be if it is to, you know, use those funds for an emergency as opposed to the preventative maintenance.
Thank you.
This is my favorite one.
Parking lots, we just read a, we have.
Anybody drive into the parking lot today?
If you drove in here, if you drove through town, you felt the two, so. Yeah, so obviously, in the winter time, this is not going to happen. But hopefully, once, we had some, we had a lot of these lined up to get scheduled to be repaired. But due to our vendor for this, I think he was just extremely overbooked, and they never got to him before the cold weather happened. So it got pushed away, and now we're in a time that we can't solve these. But hopefully, when the weather warms up and we get some time, then we can attack all the entire district from the parking lots, the manhole covers, the drainage. At every school, there's there's stuff that we can improve.
Which ends up being a patch, right? So we've replaced, we've repaired a couple of the manhole covers here at NOR. There's been a couple of spots at the high school that we've repaired over the years that are continuing to be issues. So you'll see when we talk about capital items that a plan for the parking lot overall is something that is, you know, we need to start to look at. And we did have conversations with both the DPW and the town manager about what that looks like for us. Because at this point, nobody has ownership of our lots. It falls on us to repair, which doesn't seem like that's where it should go because we don't own any any part of that property. We're just free renters, I guess. You know, so there's a lot of conversation that needs to happen between ourselves, the town, and the DPW to get a full-scale project in the works.
So when we do that, can we also figure out timing?
Oh, yeah. We're going to do it on Thursday as well.
Well, no, timing in which years you need to, because we can't, we're not going to do all five at once, right? And we're, the town's going to need some time to plan. The one thing here which, and I, this is the last page. A little, it was a little confusing to me, or maybe I'll ask a question please. Is there anything on this list that is not part of the capital plan that needs to be done next year? Or not meaning?
So some of the flooring pieces are not part of the capital plan. The phone system at Hobymock is not part of the capital plan. And the upgrades to the loading dock at the middle school are not part of the capital.
Okay. So can we get what those costs are?
Yeah, we'll include it obviously in our priority discussion as we talk about where it falls on one, two, and three when we bring it back, what it'll put a cost to.
I think, yeah, I think if we could get at each of these, at least the cost of the additions outside of maintenance of effort. So we have that running list. So when every group comes, we at least know what the previous group asked for. It'll just make it easier, because otherwise, whoever comes in last is going to have the benefit of recency bias, which means.
It's very bad that's last.
Yeah. Plan that way. Because you're, because you're, because that's going to be the most compelling argument because it's going to be the last one you heard.
All right, and the last slide, some things we've already accomplished over the last year, the new hot water system at Pembroke High School, which is a big fun project we got done over the summertime, which is working fantastic, a nice new lawnmower. North Pembroke phone system is going to happen here pretty shortly, and then district quad, some looking forward to getting some new buses that will, you know, really help out our, this is really kind of an athletics kind of buses, but that's a nice upgrade for us.
Do you have an update on when they might be arriving?
July, it'll be here July.
Because I know there was a backlog on this.
You realize this list is a lot shorter than the other ones with the things that need to be done.
Right. So what we've done in the past, and, you know, it's not the right way to do this, is really put off maintenance. And it's starting to come due, right? That's, we mean, we were going to get to this place, so.
No, it's, yeah, it's, I was joking, definitely tongue-in-cheek, but, yeah, but and we'll say this, though. We've been fortunate, and it's a good time to move on to the capitalist, with the town, the CPC funds. We've been able to make some some headway on things we never would have done. I think, as you mentioned earlier about the seven units at the high school, HVAC units between town meeting funds. The town was really great in supporting us there as well as what we've got through ARPA ARPA funds. So if it wasn't for those few things that happened, we would be in really bad shape, so.
That's a, that's a big project, hold us up.
Yeah, absolutely.
And we get the first ride on the new buses, right? Shotgun!
Bet you can ask.
Just buckle up if you can.
Dan's positive. They're going to be narrower buses, so when they have to go over the bridge, right?
They're actually different buses than the one we got. Bluebird bus instead of the flat front bus they have. It has the racks for sporting equipment. We, you know, we upgraded a little.
Knowing when they have to go over the the Sagamore Bourne Bridge, it's not, one lane isn't wide enough.
I'm scared of my top, I can't imagine.
Now, we have what we've put forward into this town's capital plan. We looked at this through long-range planning about a month ago. As we needed to push it forward, so.
So I put in placeholders for these items because you all didn't meet in the timeframe that the warrant opened and closed, which is amazing. You guys meet all the time, but it wasn't that one week window that it was open.
How do you not do that?
Yes. So the the town is aware that these are placeholders and that you all will be discussing it this evening. And I would tend over the official request from this committee following the meeting. I can talk a little bit about each one if that's helpful.
I think everybody's aware of what the Chromebooks, Chromebooks are.
Right. So some of these hit on some of the presentations that you've seen. So Brandon talked a little bit about the VMware server replacement. Part of it is E-rate funding eligible. This is the portion that is not. Brian talked about the hot water boiler at PCMS, the fire land panel at Hobymock. We have talked extensively about security cameras, interior security cameras in our five buildings, four buildings. We also have a previous town meeting vote for some exterior camera improvements at the high school. So pairing these together will be a pretty wide-scale project for us. Again, the drainage solution at the north playground, the metal roof for the gymnasium at Bryantville, replacing the gas lines to the science labs. The piece that I glazed over is the manufacturing equipment for the pathway at PHS. So we talked during Ed Sub and during program of studies about building out those pathways and that our next step is the manufacturing piece. You know, obviously, when you do these type of improvements to your programs, the timing's important. So the way the capital funding cycle syncs up, it makes sense for us to ask for some of these items in the July one cycle so that we can have the equipment so that teachers can get the training for the following summer in order to roll out the manufacturing pathway at PHS, hopefully for the school year of twenty-three, twenty-four. So this, that dollar amount represents some of the equipment that Mary Beth will go over, which is their teaching and learning presentation. I think it's in Mark's presentation as well, when he does the high school. We were already approved for our phase three CPC funding, which includes the backstop and the remaining fieldwork at the PHS baseball and softball fields and repair to Carol Dodge Field to both the ramp and the stadium there are in need of repair. So that will be on the warrant in the community preservation article. And then the water lines at the high school science labs are eligible under the town ARPA funds. So they have not spent any of their funding yet at the town level. They haven't had any of their conversations yet publicly about that. But there is a portion of that money that is earmarked for schools. The the usage of that money seems to to be pretty narrow. The interpretation at the town level is that it can be used for water projects or for broadband. I think there's a little more leeway in there, so we're working a little bit with Bill to see what else we have on our list that we can kind of fit into that funding as well, because that is a huge pot of money available to to us at the town level.
So that's being administered by Plymouth County again. Can we just go to the county and ask them? I mean, I know Bill will have his opinion, you could have a differing opinion. Let's just go to the source. Because they're the ones who have to, right, they're the ones who audit the bills.
Right. I mean, the state says the guidelines for what the funds can be used for. They're they're like a pass-through.
Yep, but they're the ones who, right.
Probably more likely to get an answer from that.
Well, they're they're also the arbiter, right, ultimately? They're interpreting what the state says. So as we look at this, can, two comments is, or one question and a comment. The, has the select board asked us to come in or are we asked to go in?
They have not invited us yet. Mary Beth and I met with Bill a couple of weeks ago, just as our first budget presentation. He has a schedule set up of bringing departments to the select board. We're generally late March, early April, so I'll check in to see where the.
See where we are. That, and what I would just say is when we get towards town meeting, we'll want some talking points, just so people are aware. I mean, David, you asked a question earlier about, do we replace the roofs, right? It was a valid question. Expecting somebody else is going to ask the same question, not knowing Bryantville was out of that, that bonding project. It'll just, it'll help. So any questions on any of this? So is there a motion to approve the capital funding items, capital funding and CPC items as presented?
Second.
Motion by Susie, second by David. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, it is unanimous.
So everything under that first box will fall under the town capital item. Brian, you don't have to say anything, you're really enjoying yourself. What time do your kids come in?
Seven-thirty.
Oh, so jealous.
I wish I could have been at seven-thirty.
So they make up for the Friday.
Yeah, I was going to say.
The last thing in my report is a Camp Bourndale update. Boy, am I excited to get that. So I know there has been a desire to get back to a lot of our normal spring activities for our sixth graders. That includes a trip to Camp Bourndale. We have been in contact with Camp Bourndale to see what they have for flexibility to accommodate us. We do have a larger sixth grade class, so what they are able to offer us is it's kind of a, it's a different experience than we've had with students before. So just for historical purposes, we generally put a placeholder in for our week at Camp Bourndale many years in advance. COVID has changed that, and so we don't have a placeholder for a sleepaway week at Camp Bourndale. They do not have the capacity for that right now for us. So what their suggestion was, and I think it makes sense to kind of ease back into this for us because it has been a couple of years since we've gone, is to do two days per school at Camp Bourndale without the overnight portion. So it's a full day there. You know, I think, having spent some time at Camp Bourndale with Mary Beth and sleeping over, a lot of the draw is obviously the reason why we went with Camp Bourndale over nature's classroom is the instructional program. So obviously, they're still getting that piece of it. The journaling that happens at the breaks was a huge piece of that. All of that will still happen. The amazing hot dogs that they serve, still going to have that. The the piece that we get that kids talk the most about, that experience that they love, is the death ball, AKA dodgeball, and the Gaga pitch. So the timing of the trip allows them to stay the evening through rec and coming home after that. So it's like a seven-thirty departure time from Camp Bourndale. They're getting through all of the instructional programs, dinner, journaling, and the same amount of rec time you would get if you were sleeping over. So they don't have the capacity for us to send all of the sixth graders at the same time, just because of the other schools that they're accommodating for the week. So it would be two days per school. We've identified dates in May that work with our MCAS calendar, and they're able to accommodate those. The other piece that's exciting is that, you know, at their suggestion and kind of what you guys have talked about in the past couple of years is how do we get something for the kids that missed it entirely in the seventh and eighth grade? So they have some flexibility to allow us to do a similar two-day structure with our seventh and eighth grade students that last week before school gets out. So that week where the eighth graders are doing their harbor cruise and a couple of other things, we do have the opportunity to send them each for the two extended days as well if we choose to do that. So I know it's not the full five-day experience. I know that a lot of our families, you know, you'll remember we had that big meeting. It's a rite of passage. It's, there's, there's so much emotion attached to Camp Bourndale. This is not what we're saying the program's going to look like forever. It's just what it looks like for this year. Next year, we'll be back to the traditional one week. Our goal has always been to bring all of the sixth graders at the same time. We will get back to that for next year.
So has that been communicated out to families?
Not yet. So the administrative team, we discussed it at our meeting right before break, just wanted to make sure that they were on board, right? We want to make sure that there's still an educational value to the field trip, because it is a field trip. And now they will work with their PTOs and school communities to get that information out. So the cost for the two extended days is a hundred and fifty dollars per student. There's obviously scholarship pieces that we need to work through. So they'll start kind of working that process now.
Questions?
No, I think it's great that we're getting back to, you know, that's going to give a morale boost, I think, to a lot of the students. It's great that we're at that place.
We're getting there.
Yeah.
So we're getting back to a sense of normalcy.
Yes, somewhat, yes.
I think people, I was sort of, people just happy to be out and doing things again. They know it's not an exact replica or where we were, but we're getting there. And I said, you know, I think it's a great step, and it's a great compromise.
Absolutely.
We believe you do something for the seventh and eighth graders too.
Right. The middle school have been planning some events as well, so they were looking at tree-top adventures. So I think Donna's going to go back to the students and see whether or not what they would prefer. But we have the opportunity for them to to do it if they they want to as well.
Do we know when they might open up the placeholder piece of it again?
So we can already start to put in our reservation for the following year. We just need to give them our, what our sixth grade number will be, because our intent is to bring the students together, all three schools for the sixth grade as we had done prior to COVID.
That's great.
You know, it's, it's an important thing for the students, you know, the fact that we can at least give it something is a start, so.
Absolutely.
Are there any questions that you may?
Nothing. No, I just checked the list. The last thing is fiscal strategy.
Yep.
I'm not going to project it because it's not helpful. So I just wanted to give you guys an update. We talked when we met, fiscal strategy last week, I think before, it's all blurred, could have been yesterday, I don't know. Just to kind of check in on where we are with our CARES and our SR fundings, more on a timeline. So showing you in a, you know, a visual representation when the money expires. So showing you in a, you know, a visual representation when the money expires and kind of what the plan has been for the money. So obviously, the first bucket of money, the state coronavirus prevention funds ended last, uh, two twenty-one, two thirty, twenty-one. We had targeted that to keep our food service in the, in the black. Again, running the free lunch, um, for all does not necessarily cover our costs, so we were able to use that funding to supplement that program. As a district, we have taken full advantage of the CAREs money that has come through Plymouth County. To date, we've gotten a little over one point six million dollars from them. A hundred and seventy thousand of it was in this fiscal year. So you'll remember last year, we talked about it only being available to us until June thirtieth. There was some other towns in Plymouth County that did not spend all of their funds, so that went back out for, up for grabs, and we were able to work with the town to get another hundred and seventy thousand. So that gives us some breathing room in our current budget. You'll remember when we balanced, we talked about using first quarter of circuit breaker, we talked about using some of our SR grant money. This gives us the ability to, to, to kind of think differently about those funds. The SR one funds expire, um, this September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. We have talked, Mary Beth has talked about, um, having tutors in all of our buildings, or ELA math and science, um, at the high school level. Those are, um, in place in all of the buildings. I think the, the high school and the middle school are just getting started. It's been a couple of weeks at the elementary schools, but we're already getting great feedback from the teachers, um, and from families that'll add an extra intervention and support. So we'll use, um, the, the remaining funds in that to fund that for the remainder of the school year. SR two, we're looking at building upon that literacy program that Jess offered last summer through Title One. Kind of growing it to incorporate more students and more grades in the math component this summer. We obviously have the opportunity to, of time to plan that we didn't have last year. And I do anticipate wanting to continue the tutors, um, into next year, because that type of intervention, you know, you don't even need to see the data to know that it makes a difference for students. Um, we've also, um, increased our behavioral supports for students with contracting through, um, PAC for an RVT and some BCBA. Looking to continue that into next year. And then the SR three, the biggest bucket of money, the eight hundred and eighteen thousand, that lasts the longest, so September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. We will tap into that this summer with the HVAC replacements, um, but the remaining funds in that grant are, um, earmarked for technology, and that would be a conversation we'd be having, having going into school year twenty-three, twenty-four. So the rest of that will kind of sit, um, could be a rainy day fund, like we talked about a contingency. It'll sit there for, for another year or two before we're even accessing it.
Questions?
Do we get interest on that money or no?
Don't.
No.
Damn.
No, no.
Try anyway, there's a couple extra dollars.
That would be nice. Um, did we run a program over February break?
We had math acceleration academies, um.
How did it go?
I'm gonna let Mary Beth talk about it, it was her baby. You need a microphone though, so people can hear you.
So it was amazing. It was really, it was such a high for the teachers and for the students. I can't say enough about, it was a small but mighty group. Um, we invited over two hundred families and students. We did not have the turn up, we also had a very short window of turnaround time. We anticipate, you know, doubling our numbers for April. We invited, well, we had confirmation of first seventy-seven students, um, fifty-eight showed up, grades three through ten. Some of the classrooms were very small, some were a great, um, great ratio, but I think the students that went were pleasantly surprised. Erin encouraged us to do some raffles every day, and that turned out to be the hit of the day, and, um, there was a lot of discussion and a lot, lot of fun at lunch, so, um, that was exciting. But I would say to you also, the level of instruction was incredible. The teachers were so creative, and they, they turned it around very quickly. There were Olympics, Olympics in the third grade, the whole theme was the Olympics, and the fourth grade, they were doing, um, they were doing passports, um, around the world.
That we went through.
In grade five, they did, um, Master Chef restaurants. So there was a theme for each of the grade levels, and even at the high school, at seventh and eighth grade level, they did thematic teaching and problem solving. The academies are really based on starting with a problem, and then identifying where students get stuck, so that you can pinpoint where their, where their gaps might be. So it's, 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 sometimes it's not always easy to teach that way with large groups of students, but when you have small groups of students, you can immediately, um, pick apart the skills and the content that's missing or that's strong. So, I think it was, it was, I couldn't believe how much fun it was, how positive it was. We had specialists that provided breaks for the kids in the morning and the afternoon, phys ed and art breaks, so. It just, from start to finish, was a blast. Um, the cafeteria folks were amazing. There was opportunity for seconds, and I've never seen anything so exciting for these, like, people were like, oh my gosh, I wanna go to this school, and they can have.
When they heard that there was gonna be a snow day on Friday, the elementary kids were disappointed that there wasn't gonna be math academy.
And I have to actually say, the teachers were too. I, I, it was a really awesome spirit to the whole, um, to the whole event. It really was great.
And so we've already gotten the grant for April, it's the same funding, it's eighty thousand dollars for February, eighty thousand dollars for April, um, but we'll start.
So the challenge now is to, you know, try to expand as best we can. It is very tough on the vacation weeks. I, you know, I talked to over a hundred different parents, um, in, in the weeks preceding that, and a lot of parents were interested, their kids weren't so much. So we had some, you know, we had some discussions about that, but, um, I do think it's a great opportunity, and I'm hoping, obviously, to expand it for, for students.
And for anybody that transportation was a problem, we did offer it. There was five students that access transportation.
There you go.
Yeah, it, it was great. It was really great.
It's important, but it is important.
It is.
So can I, can I ask a question? So, it, wow, it's great, and it's great it's grant funded. We know it's clo- it should be, right? Closing the gap for those students. Is there a way that we could, in Junish, get feedback on assessments of how much of the gap it closed for these students?
Oh, absolutely.
The reason why I asked that question is, is this something that goes for a few more years? Right? And then it potentially could go on for, forever, because we're always gonna have students, unfortunately, who are going to be behind? Maybe not forever, whatever, but you don't know what the population's going to be.
It's great, it's, the grant funding is extremely generous.
Acceleration Academy is a concept that Jeff Riley founded when he was the principal of the Edwards Middle School in Charlestown, however many years ago. That was his baby, that was how he got kids to pass the MCAS. It is so expensive to run, and, and they gave us the funding to do it like that this time. It would not be sustainable for us to in, kind of internalize it at all, and I can't imagine at the state level that they would keep the funding level the same, but I would imagine that the need is still going to exist, so some sort of grant program.
Is there a way to hy- is there a way to hybrid it?
Yeah.
Right, so you do it on, on one of the vacations, or two days each vacation? I'm just, so here, here's the thing, right? Number one, you have to figure out if it works. Then number two, you have to figure out how much it would cost us to sustain, and then you'd have to figure out, in some cases, I have to think, there's cost avoidance of special education. That's just looking at it from a dollars and cents. Now, if you look at it from, you know, the other way, we have to look at this, and we should be looking at this, from a moral unethical standpoint, it's, it's what we want to be doing in order to make those, allow those kids a better chance of success.
So to your point about the data, the, um, teachers tracked data during, it was only a very short time, but they were able to track data over three, um, over those three days, and they were very selective about which standards they were going after. So, they, they were able to show where kids were at the start, where kids were, so each day, they had a little bit of something, and it wasn't a, you know, it wasn't a multiple choice test. It was something that they could look at while kids were working, so that they could get feedback. We'll compare that work with the standards on the MCAS to see if those were the standards that aligned and were the best sort of use of our, our money and our time.
Yeah.
Once the, obviously, once the results come back in the summer, we'll be able to tease that out, and we'll be able to also follow each individual student's progress. Remember, these academies were really designed for students who are almost at grade level, so we weren't going after kids who were years behind or had some other traumas or other things that were interrupting their learning. This was really geared towards, which was very cool, because this is a group that doesn't often get that kind of funding. They were looking at kids that are almost at proficiency, so that, that teachers selected students who they felt like this high dosage tutoring, this boost would get them to that level. So, we're hopeful, um, Erin's obviously had experience with it, and there's a lot of research out there that says that it's effective. So, we're hoping that we see that gain.
Cause you don't know, is there a hybrid delivery method that we could, could do?
Well, like, one of the hybrids is obviously these tutors that we have at the elementary schools. They're doing something very similar to that with, with, you know, small groups, um, in classrooms and at tighten times, so that's one way of doing it. The vacations, I, I say are a bit of a sell, so that, um, hopefully the word gets out, it was a great week, and April fills a little, we were able to get a few more kids in. Like to double that.
Are we restricted on how we do it? Are, are the restrictions around how we do this type of learning loss pick up? Cause we were talking earlier, just, you know, I'm thinking with, with Brian's conversation of partnering youth sports with our current sports to excite. We've talked about it with performing arts, or how do we get the older kids to, to mess with the younger kids, to get them excited so that they wanna continue in performing?
Is this, we have math here, the sixth graders here, we're working with the younger kids. Is there any way we can kind of continue that trend to help with that particular group especially, since they're not completely behind? But, you know, we've got people that are gonna be education majors, we have people that are gonna be engineers. Do we tap into those upper level grade levels to help these younger students? And they're getting experience, resume building, volunteer hours, and the students are getting that benefit and that excitement.
We do participate in a high school internship program, um, over the, the senior project time in the spring. There is potential as we go forward with pathways to expand that to some early education. Generally, high school students are, it's trickier with their schedules. I think some of you have had high school students, and you know how difficult that is, and this is, you have, really have to make the commitment. There, there's really a specified sort of equation to this, how many hours, how much one-on-one time.
And what are they expected to do on their breaks?
And what do the assessments look like too? So that's, all of those things kind of factor, and I think that our high school students are ama- are amazing motivators, and there might be a way to bring them in to help us during some of these, you know, camps or summer, summer schools, if we wanted to do something like that. I think that could be extremely effective. But our high school interns will fill some of that capacity, or some of that, um, deficit rather, um, over the senior project time. When they're in, they'll be in elementary schools and at the middle school, um, working with students and helping out, so. That's one way of doing it. I know it's not a perfect fit, but I really feel like that high dosage tutoring, the, the hours have to be there, it's supposed to be twenty hours. It's supposed to be, you know, there's, there's some science to it, so to speak, who knows really, but.
Just even if we could just kind of overlay that, because again, I think there's real value in, in generating that excitement at the elementary level of, here's what's to come, don't be afraid of middle school, don't be afraid of high school.
So it's nice that you say that actually, cause we had, this is, we kind of flipped things a bit, and we had the high school students have lunch at the, at Habermock, because we had more students at Habermock. So the seven to ten students walked over and had lunch before the younger students, and they, they, they were like superstars when the little kids were coming in. And we also had all of the lunches together, so we had a third grade table, a fourth grade table, whatever. And it was, so that part of it, you have, you're onto something that was very effective in terms of motivating.
I think it just generates excitement, and it takes away that fear.
And the raffles, I'll tell you, Susie. We could do a raffle every hour. I think we could, we could double or triple the numbers.
Yes, I'm just thinking of the mental health component, I mean, I, we're, we're seeing such increased levels of anxiety and stress. And if there's any way that we can, you know, ongoing alleviate that, um, you know, it's, it's a hot topic, and I think we still have a wave coming at us. I don't think we've seen it all.
I think, well, we have a few years of this.
Exactly, exactly. It's not something that's a, you know, take a pill or, or push a button and it's a quick fix, you know, it, so if we can somehow, you know, and I, I, I really trust that you're already thinking about all of this. I guess I'm just asking the question so that folks know that you're already thinking about this, so.
Thank you, yes. But I do think there might be some opportunities there for us to bring some student leaders into it. Again, vacations are tricky. It's tricky.
Especially juniors going to look at colleges, so.
You've got your AP students, who are really kind of being.
They're working hard, yes, yes. So it, it can be very, it can be very challenging, but certainly there might be some ways to do that, so you can look at it.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay, with that, at eight thirty-four, take a motion to go into executive session. Pursuant to chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, eighty-three, discuss strategy for collective bargaining as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the legal position of the school committee as declared by the chair, after which no further business will be conducted.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion by David, second by Susie. Sue? Susie?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Lance?
Yes.
I'm yes. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.
Great job.
Thanks, man.